Today is April the 13th, and it is right now 5:00 PM. And we will be starting with one of our favorites, Michael McCaffrey of our world famous library.
Oh, he has a pass out.
Is that same as the email?
Yeah, he gave me one.
Oh, okay.
We'll work with it.
All right, sounds good.
He put two extra zeros at the end.
Yeah.
Common mistake.
Oh, boy, he's taken up even more desk space.
Because I got what this is.
That's correct.
Okay.
The whole thing is correct.
Okay.
Hey, did you pass these off to anybody?
Hello, Chief. How are you?
Hello, hello, hello.
Your show, hello.
All right. So I'm gonna do my usual overview.
You mentioned, so just the numbers one was the...
Correct. The overview is correct.
The overview is correct.
Yes.
That's what I got, yeah.
Yes, but the numbers, I looked at it and went, oh. For some reason, I pasted last year's numbers.
Yeah, you did.
So my apologies. So anyway, so far this fiscal year, the libraries are once again to stay in line close to budget. Last year, our audit showed we only had $1,000 difference from budgeted actual expenditures, which I was kind of happy with, because it's pretty close. It looks like that trend is continuing. Note as a reminder, the library does not get any revenue from the general fund. It's by and large a self-supporting entity with some state money and Tifa aside, funded through the annual millage. Of all costs and services, the library uses for staff, bond debt and operations is factored in. A gradual long-term plan that accounts for the atrophy of the millage rate over time accounts for and considers inflation and other factors as well. Libraries were impacted drastically by the COVID epidemic this past fiscal year. But so far this fiscal year, we have checked out and renewed over 174,158 items, up from 123 items last year. Event attendance, in fact, has been higher than pre-COVID levels. And we look to continue to expand outreach. We're going to continue those trends. This upcoming year, as I've mentioned before, we're going to continue on the path we've set forth in two previous years and continue to set the following objectives. Continue on a positive, get responsible track on salaries, wages each year. Make sure we're meeting fringe benefit costs equitably with staff. Continue to add to the fund balance and save for future stability of the library. And account for the structural maintenance repair of both buildings. A couple lines I wanted to point out. Line 738, 738, 706 salaries. One, this one line was a little different than the very first budget report that came out. The actual value should be 480,982. On this because the initial budget proposal didn't have the budget amendment that was passed in February, autumn. Okay? So that changed the salary line for this fiscal year to 449. With the proposed salary increases upcoming this year, the new line total should be 480,982, not for 50 something that's on there. Okay? And line 738, 738, 688, 738, coin copies. Copy charge income has been reduced as library continues a welcome practice of making the first 10 copies free. We feel this practice helps job seekers, kids and college students get things accomplished, and improves the community and furthers our mission. So with that, any questions about anything in the overview?
Yeah, I had a, well, nine-year-old, I was gonna go into the budget specifically, but go ahead.
Okay. So, turn to the budget. Starting with...
So I had a question in regards to the state grant. $206,000, which is good, almost quarter million dollars. What is that specifically for?
That's for continued outreach efforts. We're going to be making sure we get more material specifically for our grade rates program, which goes directly to schools. And we're going to be doing a, I'm sorry. We're going to be doing a large upgrade of our computer infrastructure and our computers. And making sure we have a vehicle on both ends, like we have one on the south and one on the north end. And that's the big things that the grant is covering.
Good job bringing that in.
Yep, yep. Thank you very much. So the millage, the state grant, the local community fund, stabilization shares, still pretty consistent. Contribution for the general fund. The contribution for the general fund, again, is the Tifa payment. It's the actual, it's the payment coming from Tifadas. Misalaya's income, that's money from the friends. Interest, $35,000. That actually might be kind of a low calculation, might end up being a little higher, considering interest rates now, so if so, good. But I'd like to estimate revenues conservatively to make sure that we're over those marks, if we can possibly get there. Reimbursement, MMRMA, $5,000 is kind of a good placeholder. State aid penal fines at around 80. That's pretty on par. Library fines, as I've mentioned before, we've done away with them. That small amount is just for incidentals and lost items and that kind of a thing. And coin copy printers to about 6,500, as I mentioned in the overview. Any question with any of the revenue lines?
Nothing on mine.
Okay. All righty. Okay, so salaries, as I mentioned in the overview, the recommended budget, instead of that 452,982, is gonna be the 480 and change that I put in the overview. That's because if you looked at the amended budget for '22, '23 at 421,626, that in fact should be 449, because the budget was amended in February of this year. Okay? The 706.030, RET PR years, or retirement, actually, I think that's actually what the PR stands for in terms of abbreviation. Since this budget came out, we are gonna have another retiree, so that number probably is gonna be closer to 20,000 in terms of payout. So just heads up that that is going to be changed or altered.
What is, what is gen- Joe, general government pension?
Okay, yes.
Okay, but then I noticed there was nothing in previous years and suddenly it was 106.
It was split out. If you'll notice, the fringe benefits went down from $200,000 to $74,000. And there's your 126 difference right there.
That's a difference, okay.
So what it is, is just to make sure that better accounting practices, it will split out. That way you can see what's going towards our pension. Part-time, let's see, it's going towards, it's going up there. As we continue to compete, part-time labor is a particularly difficult market in terms of making sure you have staffing, so I have to constantly make sure that that's at a right number. Fringe benefits, supplies, utilities, those are all in par. Doors member, that's fine. The awarded grants, see, there's 206 there.
That's where I have a question.
Yeah.
What kind of grants are we awarding?
Oh, we are award dead.
It comes to us rather than from us?
Yeah, actually, you have it on both the income and spending line.
Okay.
Right, so, so you can keep track of, hey, we've spent it from the account. So, yeah, it's the same grant that we got in.
Okay.
Contract services, library network contract account, telephones, mileage, library events programs, print, publish, repair, building maintenance, 15, training, capital outlay, that's still mostly books. Other major, we're going to be continuing to buy chairs. So that $10,000 goes towards chairs. And then the bond principal, contingency and interest, the last three for the bond payments at both buildings.
How are we doing on, I know at one point we were replacing some carpeting, especially at this one here, this library.
Yes, actually, I was going to mention that as well. Those are going to be in the form of a budget amendment. I'm going to be getting quotes on these this fiscal year. And when I get a more accurate amount, I'm going to be making sure that that's in, done this upcoming year. I had exactly intended to do that before COVID, and then COVID sort of threw everything in kind of a wash. So I may be doing that this year, and also I'm going to be resurfacing the roof at JFK. They've had some, lots of intermittent leaks occur year to year to year. And I have looked into that, I've talked to building maintenance, I've talked to Ali Deeb. And the recommendation is for a few more years, more, more years anyway, get a code on it first before we do a full replacement.
So as I go in there, a lot of times I see a security guard. And thought that always comes to mind, and I don't know how to say it, I'm just gonna be direct about it. Seems like wasted money, honestly. Because I mean, at the library, how dangerous can that be? And how, I mean, if you think about it, as opposed to like, let's say, City Hall, which probably needs even more, but we don't have one here. But at a library, I mean, I can imagine, I know libraries pretty well. I spent a lot of time there when I was young, I know libraries. So every once in a while, you'll have, obviously, kids acting up. But usually, in general, the authoritative figure such as yourself coming over to, let's say, Dave Abdallah at 12 years old, acting like an idiot in the library, is usually enough to, you know, stop it.
Well, often, often that's...
I mean, you don't get fights or break-ins or whatever you wanna call it.
Well, I hate to say that it can happen from time to time. Not frequently, but yes, it can happen.
But it's cost versus, it's cost versus benefit. So if you have a cost of a security guard seven days a week, whatever this number of days that you're open all year for maybe one or two incidents, versus being able to call the cops, because in general, when you call the police, they're there within two to four minutes. Most incidents at a library are not so time-sensitive, so that you have to have somebody there on the spot. It's not a bank.
I would say more than you think. And I'm not saying that, you know, that's anarchy and there's fighting going on all the time, but there is actually a sort of, you see, a library is a very rule-oriented organization. So you have to enforce rules 62 hours a week. And it's, it's a type of organization that constantly practices rule enforcement. And so in doing that, a guard helps supplement staff when, not just kids, but adults, you know, sometimes can act a fool here and there.
But the point I'm making, is it sensitive, but even if it's an adult, like, let's say, Dave Abdallah, 57 years old, you say, Dave, be quiet, which, by the way, would always be quiet in the library. But if you did, and I said, well, I'm not gonna do that. It's not such an emergency where you can't call the police officers to be there in two to four minutes. You know, I just think, like, how much do we pay the security guard, for example?
It ends up to be about $30,000 to $40,000 a year.
I just think, honestly, in my personal opinion, I think it could be money better spent.
Now, listen, in some ways, I wish that was the case. I agree with you. I'll say this, we don't hire them for every single hour of the day. It's literally just during the busiest time, which is usually about 3:00 to 6:00, 3:00 to 7:00.
Counselor Chair?
So, yeah, we don't do it 10:00 in the morning, so.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Director McCaffrey, great job. I mean, I wish every department came to us with this type of budget. On the situation with the security guard, I go there quite a bit. We have meetings there. And you'd be surprised when you get a group of kids in there, and they go into a little room, and they just tear it up, throw paper around. By the time, you know, one or two minutes, they're gone. I mean, there's no deterrent if you don't have someone there. It is a good thing when you walk in, because, you know, especially elderly people, they wanna feel safe. And there's a lot of elderly people in the library, and a lot of young people, which is pretty cool. But can you tell us how, you know, everyone watching and us here, how you get your majority of your funding? Explain that to us.
It's a dedicated library millage that's sent out via the tax rolls. The, year to year to year, the actual tax rate in terms of the millage rate goes down based on property values, I'm sure realtors all know about that, so it goes down year to year to year. And the way I project out is that I have a plan whereby I factor that in all the way to 2033. And the reason I factor it into 2033 is that's when the bond comes off the books, and then it's kind of a different budget situation. So, but yeah, I factor that in, the atrophy of the millage year to year to year. And that's where most of it comes from. There is a little bit of state aid and a little bit of penal fine revenue as well. So by state law, some money that, from speeding tickets, comes to the library.
$10, or used to be $10.
So, yeah, it's only a base amount. And also with the, also with the guard, in terms of calling police every time, it, it's tough to call police all the time for something like a relatively minor incident. And, you know, because there's also things that are higher priority for a police department normally sometimes, you know, and we have a good PD, they respond well. But, you know, if there's something serious going on, like a chase or something else going on, we're probably down the ladder, so sometimes it's three or four minutes, sometimes it's a little later. And you don't really wanna call them every single time something comes up. And the guard is just supplementary, and he helps the staff get through that particular situation. And again, I'm not thrilled it's there, but sometimes it's something we have to do.
Real estate councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Director.
Mike, do we have that security guard? Do they also take care of incidents outside the building?
Library property.
Okay, so that includes the parking lot and...
Yes, yes.
Accidents and that kind of thing?
They're supposed to be patrolling around.
Okay.
They don't deal with traffic accidents.
Right.
That's the police. But in terms of making sure that everything's okay on the parking lot and on the grounds, that's part of the responsibility, not just inside the building.
Counselor Chair, what's the contingency consist of, just before the interest?
The contingency line is the line, the money we pay the city for the city's services they provide us. So there's paper towels, there's air conditioning services, legal, phones, IT, all of that stuff is in one package.
Accounting.
Accounting, yes, accounting, HR, all of the services the city provides us is in the contingency line.
And for the bond principal, is this, how much do we still owe on the bond?
Eesh, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but 2033 is when the bond is done. So we are two-thirds of the way through it, if that gives you kind of an indicator, so.
How much was it in the beginning?
Let's see, four to five million, I think. But let me, let me verify, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give you false information. I'll make sure to get you that information.
Is that the millage for the two libraries to, or is that, that was a lot of the millage?
It's an operational millage for both libraries, and that millage also pays the bond on the north end building. Tifa pays the bond on the south end building. So what happens is Tifa gives us the money, the city the money, as a pass-through, to pay the bond for the JFK library.
Okay. Any other questions, council members?
Mike, good job as usual, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike, just quickly, just a curiosity thing, roughly, how many people go through the library per day? Per library?
Well, we usually have a total count of around 220,000 visits per year. I can extrapolate that out. Now, there's some days where it's slower, some days where it's bigger, some days we have programs that are larger, some days it's quiet as a mouse, some days it's quiet at night, some days it's busy at night. It varies, but we average around 200 to 220,000 gate count currently per year for 2022.
And the computers are always being used, so if somebody doesn't have computer access for whatever reason, they're looking for a job or something, they can go to the library and get on the computer.
Yes, a library is a vehicle for self-improvement and self-education for residents. That's what we do, and that's the service we're in, and that takes many forms, including computer services.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have cable.
Excuse me, before we go on, can I just reiterate something?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that the salaries for the library did increase in February of 2022, and everyone did get anyone between a 9 and a 20% increase. And that is included in the number here of the 452,982. So if you're asking for more, then I would recommend that that goes through HR, because all raise increases in the past do go through HR.
Well, Mike told us the salaries was adjusted to 480,982.
No, that's what he's requesting. We adjusted them...
Which number you say to 452, where are you getting that from?
That's what the budget recommendation is right now.
So he requests 470, and we're, recommendation is 452.
So, a couple things, the...
I need that clarified, 'cause I don't see that 452 number anywhere.
So, the 449 that was amended...
The original 442.
Right. The, correct.
Yeah, that's what was originally in there, but I crossed that out and put in 480,982, which is what Mike said was a change.
So, here's, here's where the difference lies. The 449, the one that was budgeted or changed in February of this year, was actually last year's raise, the 2022 raise. The 480 is this year's raise. What happened was, is the last year's raise was done later and retroactively. So that's why the base amount of 449 exists in terms of, instead of the 426. And so this year, it's going up to 480. And the reason for some of those increases in terms of what the percentage was, was some of them were promotional increases, because somebody was promoted to a department head or a branch manager, some of those, so that's why...
But the 480,982 is the correct amount, not what was originally printed in the 452?
Correct. That's what I am requesting, so.
Okay.
That is what he is requesting.
Right, but I'm saying, what I'm saying, Controller, in the initial printed amount in the, in the request was 470. In the initial amount that was written in, I'm sorry, typed in there, was the 452,982.
That is correct. That is the recommended budget amount of 452.
Okay.
Counselor Chair?
Go ahead.
What percentage would that be for this year's increase?
Especially around 4%ish.
How much was it last year's?
Last year was anywhere from 9 to 20%, and I had already increased it by 5% by giving the 452,000.
By 5%?
And the 5% was the difference between, all right, so the base amount of 426 should be 449. The 5% that the comptroller added puts us at 480. So it's the same, it's the same number translated, but the 480,982 is the comptroller's 5% raise added in. Does everyone understand that?
No, I'm confused, because it doesn't make sense. Either the numbers are wrong here or...
Okay, so, all right, so this, so as you look at the salaries line. All right, you see the amended budget for 2022, '23 in the second column.
Yes.
That number should be 449.
Well, here, here it shows 421.
That's correct. It should be 449, because this was amended by council this February, 449. So if you add 5%, the same amount of $31,000 that the comptroller added, that's where you get the 480 in the recommended. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, no. So then the recommended number is wrong?
So, yes.
Or whatever, or you guys didn't recommend the 5%?
No, it's the 5% is what the comptroller recommended, that's what I put in. So it's, it was that the base number, 421, 626, was incorrect, it should be 449.
Right.
And then you add the percent, which brings it to 480. Or, well, it was the amount that the comptroller...
Yeah, but whatever I'm looking at here, if you add the 5%, I mean, it shows that you requested, no, it shows that you requested 470, but the recommended budget is 452.
Correct, the number is just wrong.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yep, that's wrong, right, that's in effect.
Any other council members with questions? Okay, thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Next up, is cable, is Rob gonna come from the back, or how's he doing this? Robert? Controller, are you presenting cable for Robert, or coming in from the back?
I thought he was coming in from the back, but I can definitely go through it for you.
And that's page 30.
Unless you're gonna fire us, if the chief is here.
Okay, we can run through this for the, for the cable TV department, is that what we're doing? Okay. So their budget for their salaries is at 47,940. Their part-time, 64,400, that went up a little bit from 50.
So, so why did that go up? So I know the amended budget was 64,400, but then the projected activity for this year is $54,000, but then we're bringing it back up to 64,000. So the question is, why did it drop, or why is it going back up?
Yeah, I...
Same thing.
Yeah, I believe that they just actually kept the same number from last year, the amended budget. We can go down though, since they have not used it, and you can see the projected is at 54. I think at this point, they probably just use the same number that they did last year, thinking just in case as a placeholder. So there's like $10,000 in there, there's a placeholder.
Okay. And the other question I had, Controller, is on the newsletter expense. They had projected activity for this year, $10,781, but then they had the recommended budget at zero.
I do believe that they moved that from this department over to another department.
Remember, you know, Councilor, it came up in the audit that money from PEG money was being used for the newsletter, and that might be that being backed out.
Any other questions?
The other thing is the PEG capital improvement of $620,000, because they are requesting new equipment, and they do have it in their fund balance in the PEG fund to cover that.
Counselor Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Couple things is, how much is in the PEG fund right now?
Oh, I can tell you that, hold on one second, I'll look it up for you. Right now, I am showing in that account $1.3 million.
It had dropped a little bit, Councilor, if you remember when they redid the city council chambers.
Right, Studio A.
Yeah.
How many employees are there in the cable?
I am guessing, I think there's about five, but I would have to get back to you on that total number.
Are they mostly part-time, or?
Yes.
Rob encrypts, or is he emergency manager now?
He is the emergency manager.
So he's not, he's not getting paid from this?
No, mostly, this one's Angela and...
John?
Yes.
Ian?
No, and then there's the third gentleman too.
I can look it up for you if you'd like.
Stan.
Dan. Stan, Stan.
Stan, sorry. Yeah, Stan, that's the, that's Steve.
Okay, while she's looking up there, any other questions from any of the council members?
She answered, I think she answered a question. You know, I've got a question on a lot of these budgets, there's no, nothing in the requested budget. How, some of these, why is that?
I think for these smaller ones, like the cable, I know this is the first time that she actually did a budget, so we sat through her, with her, and was just kind of like telling her, based on what she spent last year and what the budget was for the year before, this would look like a good number for the, for the new budget. this would look like a good number, uh, for the, for the new budget. So she, the cable department didn't actually give me their requests.
Well, I know some other bigger departments, your, your department for one, and the HR department, there's no requested budget. It's just what's recommended.
Hmm.
Is that?
HR did give me one, so I'm surprised that's not in there, and I could definitely come back and give you those.
But, just to partially answer that, and correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong, Controller, because the initial setup is whoever particular department had, when they meet all of you guys together, they come in with all of their wants and all their goodies and all their toys that they would like.
Right.
And then, between them and administration, they cut it down to really what they really, really need. Because obviously, if, if you guys gave everybody what they wanted.
We would be in.
Our budget would be thirty billion dollars.
Thirty million dollars in there.
So, isn't that why that's not in there? Because it's really almost, kinda sort of irrelevant.
Correct.
Because we're, because we're not, because, because between negotiations between you, your, the administration and the particular department head, who's agreed upon that, no, we're not gonna go for the fire department for three million, you both agree between each other that it's gonna be one point one million, and then that's what's put in there.
That's correct.
So, the fact that, yeah, three million is kinda sort of irrelevant.
That's correct. That's, and that's why they come here to testify like, well, this is what I didn't get, but I do want.
Right.
Kinda asking, you know, for permission from the council members.
Okay. So, um, Councilor, I don't know if you heard me, but.
Yeah.
The, the, the short, short version of it, that's what I was telling her, she said that's correct. You know how they come in to meet with the administration? And they come in with, like, the fire department, for example, will come in with, you know, thirty million that they want for whatever, all these nice toys that they want. Then between them and administration, they go back and forth and they agree that based on the budget, there's not thirty million available to give to the fire department. And they agree to the recommended budget amount of, let's say, one point one million, and that's what goes in there. So that thirty million hypothetically would be almost, almost irrelevant.
You know, that's, that's fine, but I, I have a little problem with, because there's certain department heads, they're on that committee to review budget requests. And I think they're reviewing their own budget request.
That would be a conflict.
If I'm not mistaken. I might be mistaken.
I'm, I'm sorry, what, what was that? Can you repeat that?
They say, I mean, you're, you're on like a committee to over, review the budgets, correct?
Okay. Every, every department head gives me their wish list. I go through it, and the only thing that I cut, and this is based really on what the mayor's recommendation, is their capital outlay. Everything else that they pretty much requested, they got. Their capital outlay was cut and based on their, their need actually is what I would give them, based on what we have left in the budget.
Are you the only one that does that? Or is there someone else that works with you?
Well, I, it was me, the mayor, and the chief of staff, and Plant Moran. So we went through that.
So there's a record of that there then?
And then, and then at this time, when they come forward and they tell you, you know what, comptroller King didn't give me this and I really need it, and then that's up to you to make that decision if they can get it or not.
What the councilman was concerned about is, it's that, you mentioned you, Plant Moran, and the chief of staff. His concern was if there's a department head in there that's making a decision on their wants on behalf of themselves, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, okay, see, like if I wanted a million dollars in capital outlay and I could just put it in there. I, I understand that, no, that's, that's not.
You excuse yourself when that new department comes up?
I do, I do.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Council Chair?
Go ahead, Council.
Seems with the cable, there was no increase in salaries, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, any other questions? I see none, we'll go to the next one, communication, newsletter, it's page thirty-one.
I just wanted to give you an update though, you asked me how many people were in the cable department, and I do show three. There's Stanley, Angela, and John.
Right.
Someone's full-time?
It looks like. They're part-time.
What would John's, if, if, if John is.
Stanley is part-time.
Yeah, Angela's part-time.
Angela is regular full-time in the, in the blocks, that's what it shows under palacity. And then John is considered part-time.
What would John, what would John's, not to mention him specifically, but not as a person, that position be in the cable department?
As far as his wage?
No, I mean, what I'm saying.
What does he do?
Yeah, what, what exactly? Because I, I mean, I see him taking pictures and stuff like that, but I'm not sure if that's cable, you know, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I can't answer that, I don't know what they do.
He does that weekly interview with the mayor, I believe.
Yes, yes, I have seen him do that.
Okay, so he does the interview with the mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, he videotapes that?
Yes.
Okay. So what about his picture-taking events and stuff like that, is that part of this? All right, any other questions on this? You're none, we'll go to the next one. That's communication and newsletter, page thirty-one. And, and for those who are not familiar, it's different communication, and then there's also, I believe, included in this one would be the magazine that goes out, is that correct? Any questions on that, page thirty-one?
It's pretty self-explanatory.
Nothing changed, nothing changed from the requested budget?
No.
The only thing on that, okay, here's Robert. The only thing on that one is, I believe that one was brought in from a police department budget last year, is that correct?
Uh, for emergency management?
No, for the public information.
Uh, no, sir, that was, uh, that was covered under the, oh, I'm sorry, uh, it was covered under the, the cable operation.
Okay.
Yeah.
But why is it completely different now? And if it is completely, because by being completely different, there's, there's nothing for us to be able to gauge it based on from previous years.
That is correct, yes.
So what would have, so, so based on your knowledge, what changed from previous years?
Basically, number, number one was my involvement, of course, I'm, I am no longer involved in the cable operations, okay? Uh, and number two, it, it always kinda frustrated me that we didn't have a good vehicle to really break out the general types of promotion and marketing activities. Again, it was all lumped under the, the cable operation. So, again, uh, to do this, really, it's just a matter of clarity and transparency, so.
But when you say it's lumped, was it lumped for those, so, so like right now, the add on the recommended budget is seventy-nine thousand zero-two-five. When you say it was lumped, was it an exact amount of seventy-nine thousand that was taken away from cable? Or is this an increase over the amount that was used in cable?
Uh, part of it was pulled out of cable, honestly, I'm not sure, again, because.
First of all, you see, do you understand my question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Honestly, I'd have to go back and do some investigating on that. I don't know how much was pulled out of cable specifically, because I'm not part of that operation.
Well, it's, it's, but that would be if it was split. What, what I'm asking is, is this a completely new budget, not just in terms of what, you know, where you segmented at? Is it a completely new amount that's being used that was not previously used in previous years? What is the additional dollar amount? That's probably my easiest.
Yeah, yeah, yes and yes, a couple of things you wanna take a look at. Uh, one of the biggest expenses in this, now, we have the newsletter expenses, so some thirty, thirty-six, almost thirty-seven thousand dollars. That originally, back several years ago, was.
Newsletter is at the magazine?
I'm sorry.
Is that the magazine?
That's great, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great. So, uh, originally, that was in, again, lumped into the, the cable operation type thing.
But on that, there's a lot of funds and revenue that comes in from advertisers.
Correct.
So, there's still thirty-six thousand that we as a city eat, basically?
Uh, no, 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 that, that thirty-six thousand dollars will be reduced, uh, by the amount of revenue we generate through the advertising.
And how much is that reduced roughly?
I'm anticipating we'll, we'll probably pull in about seventy-five hundred dollars per issue, or about fifteen thousand for the.
But the thirty-six is for the full year.
That's correct.
Which is, if I'm not mistaken, four magazines?
No, two, two, two magazines per year.
Okay, but it's bringing in seventy-five hundred, you said?
Yeah, roughly seventy-five hundred per issue.
So, the city still carries, or whatever you wanna call it, twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars?
Basically.
Okay.
So who, who works, who's the part-time in now?
Me.
That's you?
I'm a part-time employee, yeah.
But it's part-time with multiple hats. So this is.
No, it's full-time with the.
Emergency manager.
Full-time.
No, I'm, I'm part-time in everything now.
Part-time.
Right, but the, but the, but the salary of twen- I wanna make it clear, Councilman, the twenty-nine, four fifty is a part-time salary, and I, I hate to name names, but that position receives for just public information. The emergency manager is a different salary, additional salary.
That's correct. And I will, let, let me, let me back, back up just a little bit. When we're talking about the salaries, we'll jump ahead over to the emergency management. Uh, you'll see a, a part-time salary of.
Which is page twenty-one.
Yeah. You'll see a salary of forty-two thousand dollars in there. Uh, I don't believe that is correct, I'm pretty sure that's a little higher than, than I had originally proposed. Uh, I need to get back with our chief of staff and see, uh, see what her line of reasoning was on, on that.
Okay.
So that could, that could.
Then if that's not forty-two, can we get, I'm not so much concerned if it's one or two thousand difference, but it's a somewhat drastic difference. Can we know exact, can you email us maybe if you don't mind? Now, for those in the audience and for those on Zoom, just to clarify, any budget study sessions is basically just that, study sessions. So, this is not actual stone, this is basically a conversation about the budget, and it's probably about four, five, six layers before we get to their final approval. So, don't be too concerned if, in this case, right now, the director says, well, that forty-two thousand's wrong. This is a part of the process that we go through to make sure it's all corrected. I just have a question on the capital, um, uh, outlay of six thousand dollars. What, what are you using that for?
Are we talking, uh, communications?
Emergency management.
Emergency, yes, yes. The lion's share of that, uh, as we had talked earlier, uh, then that request came from our police department. Wayne County, uh, the traffic folks, uh, got in touch with, uh, with our police chief and suggested that in the case of large-scale power outages, like the ice storm we had not long ago, okay? Uh, as anyone who drove down Ford Road or any other of the major, uh, streets realized, when you come up to a traffic light, uh, during a power outage, you, you got a mess. I mean, everybody's doing a four-way, and so every now and once in a while, unfortunately, they're banging into each other and so on and so forth. County came back to us and said, listen, if you can, if you can procure a, a small number of just small portable generators, uh, we can, if you have those available, we can take them, plug them into selected intersection traffic lights, power those, so even though the rest of the city's out of power, at least the traffic lights will be functioning, so you don't have the, the traffic hazard.
Council Chair? That, that actually, thank you. That was brought up to, to me by several residents for the telegraph and Van Borne, it was.
Here you go.
It was, the power came back on everywhere before that, and everybody's saying, why can't they just put a generator out there? I mean, how much power does it take, they're all LED lights and just some kind of switching system. Now, is that something that our DPW or something could do, or does that have to be through Wayne County?
Uh, no, no, we would, we would take possession of those, we would own them. And, uh, again, in the case of a, of a storm, uh, or a power outage, uh, we would make sure that, that, uh, the county folks would, would be able to come, pick them up and get them wired into the, the traffic.
County would do that, we wouldn't be liable for any damage or anything. That's a great idea.
Okay, any other questions on emergency management? Uh, I had one more question, I'm sorry, but, um, on emergency management and communication slash newsletter?
See, none, uh, the other question I had is, I, I talked to you previously about this, and you said this came in, this was originally under the police department budget, correct?
Emergency management, yes.
Emergency man, that's one, that's what I'm referencing, yeah, it was originally under the police department budget.
Correct.
Why are they separating it right now? What's, what's the purpose of separating? And the other question, secondary question is, I've been through the emergency management, uh, I don't know if you wanna call it department, big room, emergency room, call it whatever you wanna call it. And me and you talked about this, about how, quite frankly, walking through there, I felt like I was walking through like nineteen sixty-one, you know? Obviously, it needs to be either used for something else or, or totally updated in terms of technology, phones. I mean, there's still rotary phones, I think, in there, it's, it's pretty old. So, I, I honestly, if that's what you guys are gonna use for a, a major emergency, whether, whatever it is in our city, I'd be, I'd be worried. So what is the capital outlay for there, and why did you switch it back from the police department?
Well, some, some of that is coming, going to be coming through the, uh, our IT department. And, uh, David, our, our IT director, is already working on some of the phone issues, things of that nature. One of my, one of my passions, quite frankly, is, uh, in, as far as the name goes, that's the Emergency Operations Center, okay? One of my passions is to bring that thing back to life again. As you know, I was retired for a few years and, uh, I'm not sure what happened, uh, while I was gone, but I was surprised I, I came back and, and not much had been updated. So again, there's gonna be a, there's gonna be a significant upgrade there, but that's gonna be one of my, one of my major objectives.
Council Chair?
Okay.
Thank you. You know, just so everybody knows, one, where is this center located at?
That's in the basement of the police department, okay, over in Michigan.
And, and can you tell people your, 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 um, education, so to speak, in emergency management?
Sure, sure.
People would be surprised.
Yeah, 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 by all means. Uh, several years ago, uh, went back to Eastern Michigan University and got a master's degree in, in emergency management. Shortly after that, um, I did the studies and the coursework, so I wanted to go forth to become a designated as a PEM, PEM, or a professional emergency manager, which is a designation through the Michigan State Police, uh, Emergency Management and Homeland Security Division. That's almost like a, in a sense, it, it's a mini master's degree, I guess, for emergency management. And then, again, compounded with, uh, before I retired a few years ago, I had about, uh, probably about twelve years of, of hands-on, uh, experience in the emergency management field. And since then, uh, again, I'm, I'm still doing, uh, continuing coursework, things of that nature, uh, related to the field.
We're glad to have you back.
Well, thank you, appreciate it, it's good to be back, it really.
Two, two things I'd like to add to this, Councilman, uh, in my conversations with, uh, Robert Ancraps, is, his vision is to be, and, and this is, you know, I told him, my concern is, I, I don't want an emergency manager that just does reactive work, because reactive work is just not good. You want proactive work and, and preparedness. And, and that's something that he mentioned, and he's completely focusing on. And the other thing, um, the, the question I had, honestly, was a concern of mine as a resident, and, and no offense to you, but I thought, you know, who's calling all the shots? You know, I mean, because he doesn't have any, uh, human manpower, or call it whatever you want, that's under him. And he clarified it for me as to how it works. Uh, there's still the police department, whether it's FBI, whoever it is that's, you know, takes over and charge, he's just working with them because he's the guy that's most knowledgeable locally and makes sure he's providing them with the needed resources, not as in police officers, but as in whatever it is that they need, whether it's a major oil spill or whatever.
Yeah, we work, uh, we, uh, we work very closely, obviously, with our, our friends in the, uh, in the fire department, in the police department. Uh, the county, uh, Wayne County has a, a very active, uh, emergency management department. And, uh, also, uh, we work very closely with the state police, their emergency management department. And in addition to that, uh, most of the communities around here do have their own, uh, emergency management programs. And we get together, uh, on a pretty regular basis, meeting and comparing notes, and we can, we're certainly able to, to pitch in and help out when another com- uh, or when another, uh, community needs a hand with something. And, uh, that's one of the things I wanna do, is really, uh, bring back those relationships that we have with, with those other organizations.
Council Chair?
Council?
Councilman, go ahead. Uh, if I'm correct, you also work when FEMA's in town during our floods and that kind of thing?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
That's what I thought.
We walk the streets with FEMA and all the officials.
I do remember.
Councilor, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. Just going back to page thirty-one, uh, telephones, it says four thousand dollars, what's the, what kind of phones are we talking about?
Uh, okay, uh, bear with me, because that's, that's one, uh, was, was plugged in on my behalf, uh. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Four thousand for, uh, phones under, uh, yeah.
It's line eight-five-three.
And while she's doing that, for the folks who are watching on, on Zoom, I apologize for not, the, your, 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 your your vision has been pretty static for a little while, I'm doing double duty tonight, I'm, I'm running the video program as well.
Thank you.
Council Chair, and he, he brought up a point about the Zoom. You know, there, there's been rumors going around that we're gonna stop the Zoom meetings and, and Zoom broadcasts and other broadcasts of the meetings, and, um, I know, I watched it on Zoom a couple of times, and it's, it's, it's better, it's fixed.
Yeah, the issue's been fixed.
And my, my issue is, is, we were told that it would be like two million dollars to fix it. And we were never asked to appropriate any money to fix the, I mean, the IT director said he had lined up equipment to buy. I mean, when they buy equipment, doesn't have to go, did they replace all the equipment or?
No.
No, actually, it was a pretty, I don't wanna say a simple fix, but it was a fix right in that back room there, uh, between, I think Angela and David Cooper, they were able to figure out, they changed something and it worked.
They, uh, they brought the folks in who, who originally installed the, the cameras, all the video and audio equipment. They, uh, they brought the folks in who, who originally installed the, uh, the cameras, all the video and audio equipment. So, uh, between the three of them, uh, they were able to work out the solution. Again, it was a, I don't want to say a s- a simple fix, but it was, uh,
Reasonably priced.
Reasonable price, yeah, reasonable fix, yeah.
Well, it's kind of scary when there's throwing around two million dollars to fix a Zoom.
Well, on that, it was not to fix the Zoom, he said that would fix a Zoom issue, but there was basically a lot of the cables, the internet cables and what have you that need to be changed.
Fiber optics is what.
Yeah, fiber optics. But it was not just for the, for the Zoom, it was for many other functions.
In the city.
Yeah.
I'm glad it's fixed.
Yep.
I'm still looking for that, but I do want to clarify that the, uh, wages, I did look at that and it was like thirty-seven five that was requested. And right now it's at forty-two.
Okay, so it's, it's in the ballpark.
This is for?
Part-time.
For the emergency department? No?
For cable.
Cable?
Yep. Is that correct? The controller, that was for cable, correct?
Forty, forty two, emergency management. Yeah.
Okay. So for those council members, just, just to clarify, so let's say later on, um, you know, one of the council members decides, you know what? No, we're not going to do forty-two thousand. I, I, I want it at thirty-seven, or even I want it at thirty-one. If we all as council members agree that it's got to be at thirty-one, then that's what we vote on, then that's basically what happens. Obviously, keep in, in mind, you got to give them enough money to be able to provide the services that are needed by the residents. Okay.
And one, one other thing, if I can jump into, uh, one of my passions, again, this is going back before I retired several years ago. Chairman, you had mentioned the, the, the reactive versus proactive. Uh, that is one thing that, uh, that I'm really passionate about is getting the city back on the beam as far as, uh, advanced preparedness type things, whether it's, uh, teaching workshops or communications through videos and articles, uh, working with our CIR, Community Response Response Team, things of that nature. I really want to get us back, uh, back to the point that, that people are thinking about if there is a major event going on in the city, what do I need to do as a resident to protect myself?
Good idea.
That's going to be one of the factors.
I think the microphone's making that noise if you have your cell phones on there. It might be your cell phones. If you have cell phones on, it might be, it might be what's causing it.
Okay, I did want to just touch base on the four thousand dollars for the phones that you're looking at. Public information, uh, according to my notes here, it shows that it's because a new department, we put four thousand dollars in as placeholder for phones.
So are we talking like landline, landline phones or mobile phones?
Do you need landlines?
No, really, no, no. I mean, other than the, uh, well, for, on, on the communications side, certainly not. Uh, again, I do everything off the top. Uh, again, uh, emergency management, you'll see there, there may be something there. We'd have to get with Mr. Cooper on that.
I think, uh, I think what they're, they're talking about, because these, these phones are sold inside, so if there's an emergency, they want, Mr. Cooper wanted to upgrade them. So they're obsolete.
Well, this is not the emergency department mayor. This is the, for the newsletter, for the public information.
Oh, phones for the newsletter?
Yeah, that's four thousand dollars.
Public information, there was four thousand dollars put in as a new department for telephones. Um, I'm not sure if we were going to put in landlines in there, if.
Now, looking, uh, looking at the, uh, the two sheets, I'm not seeing a, oh, thank you. Uh, I'm not seeing a telephone line in the emergency management.
It doesn't say the words telephone line. I don't think it says telephone.
No, this is the public information, page thirty-one.
Yeah, yeah, telephones, yeah. And that's the one with, uh, with, uh, four thousand dollars. But in looking at the emergency management, there is not a line there. So I wonder perhaps if that was a, a bit of a typo, maybe that, uh, that four thousand dollars was to be split between the two departments. I don't know.
Yeah, can you, turning yourself and the controller, look into and just email us stuff?
We sure can.
Uh, if you could email us, Controller, the adjusted budget for that particular, that particular page thirty-one, with the corrected number.
Council Chair.
Yes, Council.
Wouldn't it be beneficial if the emergency manager, I know this is public, uh, but his phone from, be hooked up to that new first responder phone system that we have with, for the fire and police. I know it's like, uh, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but it's, you know, no interference, high.
The first, yeah.
Yeah, high security.
Good point. I can certainly check into that.
Yeah, good idea. Might be worth looking into, yeah. Good idea. All right, next up is our popular fire department. Chief, come on up.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you, Bob.
Back in a minute.
Uh, yeah. Uh, and the fire department is on page twenty-two. Yes, Councilman. Oh, thank you. Chief Brogan, go ahead.
All right. So, good evening, everybody. Um, so just a little, uh, overview.
Thank you so much.
Just real briefly, um, our call volume, last year our call volume was like eighty-seven hundred runs. Currently we're on pace to, to, which was a record. We're on pace to beat that again. Um, we'll be just below nine thousand runs. Well, if we keep, we're at twenty-four and a half runs a day, so that's eight thousand nine hundred and seventy runs.
And that includes obviously emergency and, I mean, ambulance and fire.
Yep, that's, that's, that's.
And both stations.
EMS and that's, yeah, both stations. And that's the, um, I mean, with eighty percent being EMS runs. Those calls just keep going up every year. Um, and we're continuing to meet seventeen, uh, NFPA seventeen-ten is getting the right amount of manpower at fires. And so we've been working together with our surrounding communities to be sure every fire we've responded to, we, we've met that, which is, uh, been a number one priority of mine. For, you know, it, it results in the best service to the citizens and, uh, safety for our firefighters and, you know, limiting damage to property. So I'm happy to say that we've been meeting that. And, uh, lastly, we continue with some manpower challenges. Um, as we get into, we start going through line by line, you'll see, uh, the overtime number. Although I do have an edit to that, what has been submitted. Um, but last year, we, we didn't manage to hire anyone. So I, I was thinking we were going to fill our five spots. We haven't, we're in the process now, and I do believe that's going to, we'll see a vast improvement in that. Um, hopefully, uh, even more than what I'm, what I'm going to suggest here shortly. Um, and I did pass out just, uh, um, because we will talk about vehicles shortly. Um, just, just so you guys, I know that some council members have always asked to kind of get a, get an overview of our vehicles because that's our biggest, uh, one of our biggest capital expenses. All right, with that, we can just go through line by line. If you guys are ready.
Yes, please.
So, um, and you were asking before about why sometimes there's a blank place in what was requested.
Mm-hmm.
For the fire department, those, the, those are numbers that the comptroller office usually supplies for us, like the salaries and that. That's, that's something that, um, comptroller comes up with. So everything stays the same. Part-time is the same. The twenty-five hundred, that's just in case, uh, our, uh, administrative professional has to take extended time off. We need someone in to do the billing for EMS. But the biggest one there is overtime. You see is set at seven hundred and fifty thousand. I do, I'm proposing that we lower that to six hundred and fifty thousand. And I'm, I'm hoping we can, we can even beat that. It's going to be dependent on how many people we do get in the door. Um, you know, I, I say we're down five spots, but what that translates into is we have three different shifts. And so two shifts are down two firefighters and one shift is down one firefighter. And so you can see there's no wiggle room. There, there's sometimes scheduled overtime. So as soon as someone takes sick or has a training class or whatever it might be, it will translate into. Get myself from here, sick house. Um, turns into overtime. So, uh, when, when manpower comes, then the overtime will, will drop right off. So just hiring one person makes an impact on that. And, and we've got probably three solid candidates that we, that have been interviewed. The list isn't completed yet. They're still waiting to fill one, one more. Um, and then we, I think we're still getting some more applicants. And so hopefully, we're, we're going to see that number improve quite, quite drastically. But certainly, I'm, I'm comfortable taking a hundred thousand off it right now. Um, and then we'll, we'll keep going. You guys have any questions about the overtime?
No, well, just, I just want to make sure. You said the final number is six fifty?
Six fifty.
Not seven fifty?
Not seven fifty.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I want to go back up to the salaries. The, the four million, four hundred and ten thousand, is that what you anticipate full amount of, uh, employees?
Without the part-time.
Yeah, without the part-time and that's like with, how many, how many do you, how many is your wish list of employees?
So we, we should have a total of fifty-nine. We have fifty-four in suppression and five in administration.
So you're budgeting for fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine. And then there's, there's, uh, we have one other, uh, our administrative assistant is, is in the, um, TPOM.
Council Chair.
Yes.
In the same line, Chief, uh, seems like the projected activity for this fiscal year is four million seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So how is it going down to forty, four million, point, four point four for next year?
Can you answer?
Yes, sure.
I believe that the four point four million is what we had budgeted for. And we are assuming that that's going to be a total of fifty-nine FTEs. And the four point seven that we are projecting is, I am going to say probably because of overtime and because of comp and payouts. So that's just a projected number. Right now we're at three point one. So I, I, I don't really pay much attention to that projected number.
Thank you.
So Chief, I had a que, instead of going through these all line by line, because some of these are somewhat pre-standard and pre-consistent year after year. Um, so we'll just go direct to the questions if you don't mind.
That's a question.
Couple of questions I had is on, um, clothing. Um, they had quite a bit of a drop this last budget year or this current budget year, but then you're back up to a hundred and ten. Why, why is there an increase?
So that actually, the, the, the last, and the last payment of the, of the year is for, is the uniform allowance for the firefighters. It's paid on like, uh, June, the, the very last payment in June. And so that's two percent of their salaries. And so, so it'll show like we're, we're trending to not spend very much money. But then when you look what's actually spent, it, it comes out to around the hundred and ten thousand.
So if you look at what we've spent so far and it shows twenty-nine thousand, but it's projected at forty-four thousand, that's why I don't really pay attention to that projected too much. Because at the end of the year, that projected is just kind of like thinking, oh, well, we've only spent this much this month. So based on a trend per month, however, like the chief said, at the end of the year is when it gets all one lump sum.
Okay. And the other two questions I had, uh, can you please explain what a crash response? I mean, it's kind of self-explanatory, but what, what is that? Is that something we don't have? We never had?
Yes, that's something brand new. And so, so that is a, um, this is a grant, so we're not getting this unless we get the grant. And so this is a, it's a new, it's the, uh, Office of Highway Safety Program. Uh, I think that's what it stands for. But anyways, it's a state of Michigan grant that we found out there that will, it, we can use it for a crash response vehicle. And you know how we, we've gotten a lot of, uh, uh, extra heavy-duty rescue equipment lately and we actually have a trailer. This would be able to put it on there and act like a heavy rescue. And so we'd be able to take it out to, um, to trench, to, to different rescue scenarios. Uh, there's the, obviously the car crashes, but also like a trench rescue or something along those lines. This would be able to mount all that equipment onto that vehicle.
And you applied for a full amount grant, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other one, what exactly is, uh, the turnout gear?
Sure. Turnout gear is for, it's just our, uh, just the protect, the coat and pants and, and.
So she's getting newer gear.
That's to replace it all, yep.
But through a grant?
Through a grant.
Okay. And I, I know we've got the best grant writer last I checked. I know it was in the United States, but I think you're going maybe possibly the world, so that's good.
Well, I think she upgraded herself to the universe.
Universe, yeah, yeah.
No, okay. Yes, no, she's, she's done very well with, with the grants, that's for sure. And, and there's a lifespan on her gear and it's coming up towards the end. And so that's something that, uh, AFG puts a high priority on. She, she looks and sees what, what they're really prioritizing and gear is certainly one of them. So that's, and then obviously we have an engine on there. That's, we hope we get a new engine.
So Chief, what, what, so what's the difference between the clothing and, uh, the turnout gear?
So the, the, the clothing, what we use the clothing allowance for is for, we send out turnout gear, uh, to get repaired and, and they send it back where it gets tested. We have to do that. Uh, uh, that's kind of like a maintenance of the gear. And also if we get a new firefighter, we'll, we'll buy, we'll outfit them that way. But that's also, uh, when they first get hired, they all, they get a set of, uh, uniforms. They get, so it's not just, um.
Just the gear.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, can you go over the holiday pay? Is that when they're working there? Like, is that?
Yeah, so, so, uh, no, no, this, this is the same for, um, for the police as well. So we don't, we're not paid extra for work in a specific holiday. We just get a, uh, the, the one bonus at the end of the year based on the number of holidays. And you, and there's a whole formula that's followed, uh, based on your years of service and how many holidays that, that you covered for the year. But you don't actually have to work them and everyone gets this holiday bonus. It's in, it's contractual.
Okay. Any other questions from the fire department? Councilman, go ahead.
Uh, what, as you say, the elephant in the room, uh, the three forty-five pension, it doesn't mention previous amounts. It just shows what we're recommending for a budget.
Uh, yes, because we'd always, um, in fringe benefits last year and we pulled it out of there and put it in its own separate category. So under fringe benefits, last year it was two point seven. And this year we put it into the pension at two point three. And then the fringe benefits is actually just the employer FICO. So that's why it's at thirty-five thousand.
And Chief, any, any update on, I, I'm really concerned about that fire department on Beach Daily. Any update on, uh?
So, yeah, we, we've had some, I've been working with the mayor. He's made, he's made quite a bit of progress. I know he's, he's, his last trip to Washington DC really paid off. We've got some, um, some really strong leads. I'm not sure exactly how much I'm, I'm allowed to say because I don't know how, how official it is. But, but he's made a lot of progress on getting, getting, uh, getting us into a new place is what, what the goal is. Especially up, up towards, yeah, there's, there's a better location that would improve our response times and that's, that's stuff that, that, uh, we've been, we've been making steps towards. And I, I have a couple of other edits I wanted to go over too.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The, uh, in our contractual services, we don't have, we used to always have our lease vehicles, which is, it's about sixty thousand dollars a year for all the different lease vehicles that we have that use our capital outlay. And I need to add that into contractual services. And so we need to add sixty thousand dollars to the contractual services number.
So it becomes two sixty?
Yep, two sixty. And, um, and then I was hoping to add forty thousand to capital outlay. Um, and that's, that is just something I like to have for, you, you know, to have, to have that at zero is, is really impractical. We have so many, like, there's, like, our radios, our portal radio costs ten thousand dollars now. And we're at the end of our lifecycle for those radios. So if you get something that's damaged or needs some repair or reprogramming, uh, pretty soon, if, if it gets too expensive, it just makes sense to buy a new one as compared to, um, repairing an old one.
Well, we could do a budget amendment at that point.
Yeah, I guess we can do a budget amendment, but, um, to have, to have, there's.
Controller's looking at me. You'd rather not do it that way?
Whenever we do budget amendments, it has to come out of the fund balance. Unless you can move it from one of your parts of your, you know, within your department. I would prefer that you try to move money from your department if you're going to be using it. I do understand that there are budget amendments that are necessary at times.
What is the amount that you feel comfortable with, Controller, for this particular section? Because I think fifty seems like quite a lot.
I, what are you asking for?
I said forty, but I did that based on, I, I lowered a hundred from, so I was just, I was trying to keep my big number the same.
Because we do have, um, our expenses are less than a hundred.
Try carrying the microphone without its stand. Just take it out and, and then just move the stand away.
Okay. There, that's better. Thank you. Our revenue is, is.
New technology guru.
Yeah. Our revenue is higher than our expenses right now for this budget. So I would like to see that we actually use the reserves that we have in this budget right now before we start requesting amended budgets.
Okay. So, but, but my only concern is we do capital outlay and, and we keep it in there, uh, for forty thousand dollars, but there's nothing that you know of right now.
So, I mean, I, I have, I have things that, that I could spend on, but I, but I mean, I would, just, just the day-to-day operations. There's always going to be things that are going to, there, that.
So are you comfortable, how about thirty thousand?
Sure.
Okay, let's put that in for thirty. Are you guys comfortable with that?
Which one was that, David?
Thirty thousand.
And if, and if you look at our, I, I gave you the, just a little handout with our apparatus on it. Um, you know, I, I had initially asked, asked for a new squad. We're comfortable holding off on that. Um, if you look under our squads, it's the four, the third box down there. The last two, the Hortons are twenty sixteen. Those ones are going to need to be replaced. And my concern is it takes about a year for them to build it from the, I mean, you have the whole bidding process and everything else. And so you add that on to it as well. So not this budget, but next budget, we certainly will need one, if not two. And, and we may need to come to, depending on how the rest of our holding. So not this budget, but next budget, we certainly will need one, if not two, and, and we may need to come to you, depending on how the rest of our holding up. We may need to come to you to start that process sooner, but right now, you know, we could hold off on it, but as you're looking, these are our trucks that run all day, all night, the squads, and so we have to make sure that they, they stay running.
So just to clarify, squads would be what?
The ambulance.
Ambulance, thank you.
Yeah.
So Chief, the contractual services, what does that consist of? Like what?
So the vast majority of the contractual services is, is our, is, about a hundred thousand dollars is AccuMed. AccuMed is our billing company that we pay, um, uh, E, our EMS billing. So we, we, I think we'll probably take in about one point seven million this year, and, and, and so it's around, it comes out to about a hundred thousand dollars that we pay to AccuMed. And then we're going to have something, there's something called QOP, that's a, a service tax that we pay, that, every, to the state of Michigan pays, and every ambulance service has to pay that. That's about seventeen thousand. The lease vehicles are sixty thousand. Uh, Clemis is around seven thousand. Um, and then there's, there's.
Well, maybe it's his watch.
Maybe, it could be my watch. So, so, yeah, and, and there's, um, then there's smaller things, guardian alarm, Comcast, things along those lines.
Counselor Chair?
I know, I know Counsel, Counselor Madam Ed mentioned, um, there's something about there's plenty of spaces on requested budget for the salaries, and the chief responded by saying that's up to the Controller's office. I mean, for you to request an amount for salaries and the first, first retirement first pay, is that something you normally request, or is that up to the Controller?
Yeah, we, we usually will provide, like, the, they, they would just want to know the personnel page, that, like, we fill out a personnel page, and so how many, the firefighters have different staffs? How many one, how many firefighters have the first, first year, second year, third year, and then how many total we're going to have, just to make sure it all adds up.
Are you getting cut? It seems like you're getting cut here.
No.
It's projected activity? That's twenty-two, twenty-three. All the same?
Well, that's a different thing.
Yeah, okay. And you said that's with fifty-nine employees?
That's to be the fully staffed now.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for our fire chief?
I have a concern.
All right, go ahead.
The ages of our peers, ninety-six and ninety-four.
Yeah, so, so one of those is, um, is actually going to be gone. Um, our, our latter truck is out for service right now. As soon as that comes back, then the, 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 actually, it'll be the ninety-six that's going to be, that will be returned, because that one is in worse shape than the ninety-four. We do have the grant out, hopefully to get the, uh, to get that nineteen ninety-four truck replaced, but once that one's gone, we'll, we'll have, so a twenty thirteen, a twenty eighteen, and a twenty twenty-one, we'll, th- those trucks will be in service, and we'll only put the ninety-four in service as, as a last resort. We only need two in service each day. The other two are reserves.
That's the one that was parked towards the back of the department?
Yeah, the green one, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Counselor Chair, just one comment. Um, I've been doing a lot of research on, in different communities and checking, checking out their pay scales for fire and police. And, uh, there's some communities that are going to shock this, the world with some of these pays that they're offering to fire and police. And we got to make sure we stay in the ballpark on this, because there are some, there are some that are like, going to be like almost double what we were paying.
I agree a million percent.
I mean, we got to, we got to look at what we're approving, you know, I think, everybody talks about it for years and years, fire and police and DPW workers, senior programs, but, and I think now is the time to say freeze everything. Let's get, let's get to where something we have to do, everyone's up here said, when they campaign, they say, I'm all about the fire and police giving you top dollar, you know, and that's, that's a good thing, too. That's what they want to hear. But I think it's time for us to act on this and have, you know, have a meeting, and we can talk about it.
I'm all in. I, I, I think, you know, I said at the last budget meeting, I, I think we're underpaid. In my personal opinion, we're, the starting pay is, is not attractive enough. For, I mean, in addition to the fact, as far as the competition's concerned, is much, uh, better, higher, if you want to call it. And I know a lot of times me and HR, and we've had obviously some disagreements as far as, you know, could have better pension, blah, blah, and I get it. But I still believe the upfront pay is what's going to attract people in. But in addition to that, when it comes to fire and police, you got people, you look at, for example, the incident, God bless our, our officers that were involved with, um, at, uh, with that chase that ended at Oakwood and Michigan Avenue. I mean, you know, these are men and women that are putting their lives on the line, and let's, let's pretend it's me. It's my first year. I'm putting my life on the line for forty thousand. I, I honestly, I haven't.
I don't even think it's forty thousand. It's a little under forty thousand.
Can I intercede just for one moment here? I did want to mention that we are in negotiations, and we are taking all this into consideration, and we are definitely on board with you. We realize that our pay, our salary is low. However, we are looking at ways that we can up the salary by moving some money around, I guess I could say. Like, and, and again, we're, it's just all negotiations. This is, this is our time right now for negotiations. We just finished with police supervisors. They got, uh, four percent, four percent, and a five percent, and that went back two years ago, so we had to give them a retro for a year and a half. And so it was like an eight percent increase, and then we also are getting ready to negotiate with the police, and we are negotiating with the firefighters next week. So this is all going to be ongoing, and we will be getting them to some decent salaries.
Well, I beg to differ. I, I doubt, I seriously doubt that they're going to be offered a salary that's competitive or higher than neighboring cities.
Well, I have done some research though, Mr. Wenzel, and I do have all that information. I do have all the contracts from other cities that are reputable to our city, so we are doing our due diligence.
Because there's, there's no reason why we shouldn't be on the top. I mean, we, I've talked to dozens and dozens of residents, and most of them say, and if, if we need to increase our taxes a little bit, we'll do that. I mean, moving money around isn't going to do it. Moving in money in the budget, you got to create some new money for our first responders, our DPW workers, who I consider first responders, too. You try to drive a fire engine down the street with two foot of snow on it, or, you know, water main breaks and they can't, they can't run, run a hose to it, it'll fire hydrate. But, I mean, we got to get on the ball. We're fooling ourselves. We're proving all these millions and millions of dollars for things that really don't concern most citizens. When it comes time to our fire, our police, our DPW, we're kind of secondhand citizens, and we're going to be on the low end. And we need to have something, you know, vote from the residents, increase taxes, something, because we need to get up there. There's no reason why we can't. We, we want to pay a lot of our employees top dollar, but when it comes time for our first responders, DPW, our senior workers, it's got to be in, in baby steps. Can't do it all at once. Some departments, we want to just jack it right up. We want to add employees to it. It's, it's approved, approved, approved. And when it comes time to our first responders, it's, we give you this much now, you know, even four percent, ten percent. City of Southfield, they're going to be offering their fire, their, their police officers, you know, a starting pay of over sixty thousand dollars.
I think that we're probably really close to that, and when I have all the numbers, I'll gladly share them with you.
I'd sure like to see that.
Yes, I'll gladly share that with you.
Anything else for our fire chief? All right, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. God bless you and your men, men and women of the department.
Amen.
All right, next up, we have our police department. Mr. Chief, come on up. And we have Chief Hart presenting on behalf of the Police Department, the two sixty-five fund and the two sixty-six fund. So, uh, Police Department is page twenty. So Chief, do you prefer to go line by line, or do you prefer to just, because like I mentioned with the fire department, a lot of these are pretty common, kind of safety from previous years. Do I just take the questions only, or?
Yeah, questions is fine.
Yeah. Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay, I've, I've got a couple, more than a couple. Um, so the first question I had is on item seven oh six dash zero 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 under salaries. The projected activity through the end of the year is five point six million, five point six and some change. But then your ask is for six point one eight nine seven oh five. Do you know why there's a jump of roughly about half a million? And if it's pay, I'm all for it, obviously, but I just want to make sure.
It's, it's just a projection at this point.
Okay. Does this projection include the additional officers that we are looking to, uh, you know, hopefully hire?
Yeah, so we should be at a hundred and three point five, excuse me, employees at the Police Department, so we're planning to fill the vacancies of.
But I'm referencing specifically police officers. What, what's, what's, what's a project, when you, when you have a budget of six point, I'm sorry, salaries, six million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven oh five. Does that include the projected hires as far as police officers are concerned?
Yes.
Okay, so basically what that means indirectly is obviously the money's there and available to hire additional officers.
Yeah.
Okay, and I know you're working on, and I know some residents have asked about different changes in the Police Department. I know I've met with you, the mayor's met with you, and I know you have a lot of initiatives in, in place to bring in additional officers, and I know it's on your radar for sure.
Yeah, excuse me, um, council just approved this week a lateral.
Right.
So bringing officers in with experience and paying them more, and I think that's going to benefit three current staff members, because they'll also receive, uh, the bump up as well. That was part of the deal. We're actively recruiting. I'm on a, you know, national Facebook.
Mic from closer. Okay, thank you.
I'm getting worried about it, starting to whistle. Putting our flyers out, you know, on recruiting pages, et cetera. We do have a lot of good things going for our community. You could buy five years of service time. You can spend up to eighty-four months in the drop program. So these are things that we need to really start highlighting, uh, out there in the candidate pool. But like many professions right now, uh, there's this thing called the great resignation going on, and we're not immune to that. It means the most to us because we're here in Dearborn Heights, and we're trying to bring, uh, quality people on board that are going to come out and provide the best service to the community. I think probably the, the, the theme for, uh, this twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget year is really kind of right sizing. There has been, uh, in the past, they've had a secretary of the detective bureau. What we, in essence, what we're doing is we're paying higher wages to licensed police officers to do work that civilians can do. So if we can rework that into other bargaining groups like TPOM and, um, free up police officers to do law enforcement work, because you have to have a license to be a police officer. But we have a couple of people who are licensed police officers who are not doing police work. So we're looking to add, uh, to our record section, uh, to free up the paperwork, to get, uh, cases over to the court, to handle our subpoenas. Uh, a lot of things that other communities that offer these higher wages, they are creating these, uh, positions and, and having civilians do this work. So detectives can go out and work cases instead of trying to enter, uh, the information into the new electronic system for the prosecutor's office. So we're really kind of right sizing that, um, so to make sure that we're maximizing all of our licensed police officers in the Police Department.
In the salary, does that include the two directors that were added in the, in the current fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. And the anticipation with the two directors, and, and only if you can address that, obviously, if you can't, I respect that in terms of safety. Are those, those are not permanent, obviously, positions. They're not, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, were they not on a somewhat of a specific timeline?
No, we are, my name and my position and the two directors are included in the current collective bargaining agreement with the Command Officers Association of Michigan. So our positions are, uh, solidified and memorialized within that bargaining agreement.
So this would be kind of a permanent, somewhat of a permanent position at this point?
Is, well, as long as we're in those positions, yes.
So, uh, Counselor Chair? So yesterday, Chief, you know, when you, we, the chief, uh, the two directors, we had a law enforcement, uh, at dinner last night, with probably like two, three hundred, at least three, four hundred people, I, I actually. And, uh, when the chief and the two directors showed up, I was already almost recruiting two officers, you won't say, from our department. So when the chief, when you guys left, uh, I, I stayed another hour afterwards. I think I was talking about ten officers. And, uh, at least half of them, they were really interested. They said they love, like, when they met with you and the two directors, they said, we didn't know that they were, you know, we'd like the changes going on in the department. And five of them will be applying, you know, they said that they, uh, they, they, they've heard a lot of great things about our retirement. Even though they say about the pay, but our retirement's amazing. Plus you can buy five years, right, Chief?
Yes.
You can buy five years. So what is that retirement? Is that, was it fifteen? So that'd be like fifteen, sixteen years?
So at twenty years, you can, if you bought five years, you can, um, go into the drop program for seven years. So it, it's actually a very, very nice benefit, uh, that we have for our police officers.
And, uh, those, uh, there's five that were really interested. Even three of them ha- had about six or seven years in the department. But, you know, when they met the chief, you know, after he left, you know, they, they, I know they had a chat with you during the dinner. They were like really interested. They said, you know, they're willing to take a pay, a pay, uh, down just so they can come in and be able to get into the drop. Actually, three of them, they were really, I mean, that's like a fast about the drop, so I told them, I said, they need to talk to you about that one. I didn't know too much about it. But, uh, I mean, there was at least five or six from last night's event, and these are like seasoned officers between three to seven years, uh, you know, uh, experience. And they were from various departments. Uh, you know, obviously I can't say from where, but I know that one chief came in, we were trying to recruit two of his people. He was really pissed off, but, uh.
You know, and I'm glad, you know, during the bargaining, we've added and approved, uh, as a council body, the lateral movement thing, because that's going to be able to attract a lot more experienced officers into our department, which is, is obviously needed. You know, you always want experience. You never want to lose people with experience, and you also want to bring in people with experience.
Yeah, it's a balance right now. I mean, a, a lot of the people that are, I believe there's five people on the current list, uh, the majority of them have experience, uh, that were, that are in the background phase at this point. So we certainly want those experienced, but we also, uh, had Act Seventy-Eight approve accepting those grants from MCOS. I think it's up to twenty-six grants to cover the cost of the academy. Um, only four thousand comes back to the city, but it's better than nothing. And I think that's a great way to build reciprocal loyalty, right? My dad always said, uh, you take care of your job, but your job will take care of you. Uh, so that reciprocal loyalty is what we're looking for. And if we can bring a candidate on that is going through the academy, and they come here and we're their first police job, right? I feel that that builds, uh, quite a bit of loyalty there.
You know, Counselor Chair, one of the things, so yesterday, uh, four of the officers I was talking to, they were Dearborn Heights residents. And they're, they've told me that they're, as, as officers, they have seen some of the changes, you know, they've, they're talking to other officers who, who remain with us, obviously. And they, they love what's going on in that change, so they're, they're, they're talking. And these four officers, you know, being Dearborn Heights residents, you know, they're really interested. One of them was not interested in coming to Dearborn Heights. However, he trains at the academy, and he told me he's talking to two people at the academy and tried to convince them to come to Dearborn Heights, and he doesn't even work for our department. So there's, there's a lot of positive changes, you know, uh, coming.
And you mentioned, I think, Chief, during one of our meetings, if I'm not mistaken, your, it's either the reserves, do you give us just a little bit of an update as far as the reserves?
Yeah, there's a reserve academy coming up, um, midsummer, that we hope to get some more reserve officers, um, through the academy, and then get them out and just have them be a visible presence.
But right now, we don't have one right now.
Yeah, we have, uh, I didn't bring my red.
Tom Miles at one point, pre- previous to you, at one point was leading that.
Way back in the day.
Yeah, we have, I, I want to say we have about seven. Don't quote me on that. I, I didn't grab the right book.
It is active, is what I'm asking.
We could be more active.
Okay.
Yeah, we could be more active. We could have a more active cert team, get them engaged, uh, in things that are going on.
Because I get people ask me about that all the time. Is there a reserves department?
Yeah, yep, yeah, we have several applications. Uh, Lieutenant Jake Hatton and Director Vander Plaer are working their way through those.
Okay, cool.
Counselor Chair?
Yeah, that's, any other questions?
Yeah, Counselor Chair.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I don't know if, maybe, I mean, if the chief would be the controller, can you answer this question? So since we budgeted for a full staff department, how come the overtime, I know it seems like the. I know it seems like the department requested four thirty-one for the overtime, but we gave them six fifty-seven? I mean, the recommended budget, in a way.
So overtime was at six fifty-seven last, okay. Last year's amended budget was six hundred and fifty thousand, so we figured that we could, when we're fully staffed, we felt that six hundred and fifty-seven was a good place. Even though they had requested four hundred and thirty-one, being that they are still using overtime, and if we're not fully staffed, we wanted to keep it at six fifty-seven.
So Chief, you think if we're, hopefully, we're fully staffed, do we still going to be using a lot of overtime, or?
You know, it's, it's, it's a hard thing to predict in law enforcement. You know, if we have a couple of major incidents and I need the investigators to come in, you know, or we have vacancies. I think Mr. Wenzel had mentioned about, you know, some of the other communities that are paying significantly more. So we have a lot of our officers, our younger officers are going to those communities, right? And and making significantly more. So it's really kind of a balancing act of, it's always been a moving target for thirty-two years for me on the overtime. It's my goal to not spend all of the overtime budget, right? To to reduce that and then invest in our police officers. I want our police officers to be with their families. I don't want them at work all the time, working traffic safety or D-Dax. They should be home on their days off, spending time with their family and de-escalating and relaxing. So we're trying to find creative ways to make that happen at the police department. And so long answer is, even though it might be there, my goal is not to spend it all. Yeah.
Houseman, Wenzel?
Thank you. How many officers are you budgeting for in this budget?
About three and a half.
No, one or three was totally seventy.
Forty-seven, I believe it's forty-seven. So.
Forty-seven?
Yeah.
And last year was roughly the same, forty-seven, you know, give or take one or two maybe or something?
Yes.
Now, how many, how many did we have in the last year, twenty-two, twenty-three budget? How many officers did we have?
I guess the question is budgeted or actually?
On the payroll.
That didn't help me.
We're actually working for the city of Dearborn Heights.
Yeah, even that is kind of a, a little bit of a moving target in the sense of people have been allowed and still are currently allowed to leave and use their time. So it looks like we have five or six more people than we actually have that are simply not contributing to the mission of the police department. But they're burning off their excessive leave time. So it's, it's really a hard number to dial in on.
So we, it's, is it safe to say that we've never reached the forty-seven or whatever?
Correct.
Now, I, it was, this question was asked before, and he said, where does that extra money go? And he said, it came over to the general fund. Is that right? The extra money is not spent?
Absolutely, yes.
Now, is that in, is that in our budget somewhere? Does that show that money?
Yes.
It does, what's it under?
If you go to page thirty-three. And if you go to the bottom. Where it says beginning fund balance, and then it'll say ending fund balance. Whenever the budget is, for instance, number twenty-two, twenty-three, where, well, no, that's not a good one to use. Anyways, if if whatever is still open in the budget at the end of the year, it will go into your fund balance.
So that includes any department?
All departments.
So that's, I mean, is there, there's got to be a breakdown somewhere on that. It'd be interesting to see how much money is allocating, and then how much we're spending each, all these departments, how much we're not using. I know we need it in there in case, you know, all of a sudden we get ten, ten or fifteen, right? Yeah, okay.
Every month, although I am behind tonight, and I will get you caught up, I will be sending you a budget to actual. And that is based on by department, and it gives you a percentage of where they're at. And that's when you see me come up at the council meetings that we need to amend the budget. I don't want to, I'm trying not to do that going forward, and that's why I'm encouraging that everyone stays within their budget, where I give them enough extra, a little bit here and there, so that we don't go over budget. So that I don't have to come to you and amend the budget every three months.
Now, the the cadet program or the academy, if a person wants to apply, do they have to pay a fee to get into the academy program or the cadet program, regardless?
Not under the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards. If they pass the background, they pass the physical, everything to get into the academy, and then we hire them as an employee. Then, I want to say it's twenty-four thousand dollars, I think, tw- up to twenty to cover the academy, and then four thousand dollars comes back to the city.
So, I mean, is there, if my my son wants to join the academy, does he have to pay anything out of pocket?
I do not believe so, no.
No, that's a good thing. I I looked at the PAOM website, and they have several municipalities advertising. And I didn't see, I didn't see anything from Dearborn Heights on there.
On POAM?
Yeah.
Or MACP?
POAM.
POAM? I didn't know that the union carried a, carried any type of a employment board.
They, they, they've got something. I was, I was made aware of it from a very educated resident, which keeps me informed, I think. Okay, I got, I just got a couple more things. I, you know, I I'm very passionate about certain things, and, you know, one of them is crossing guard. I'm, I do crossing guard every day myself. And it was stated about five months ago that the city of Dearborn Heights was going to get people from Wayne County to come in and help us with crossing guards. Did that, did that ever happen?
I don't remember saying crossing guards, but if we continued to have problems, that we would bring in the reserves or Wayne County sheriffs to help us around the school.
It was, it was crossing guards, it was referred to Joey Smith, and I specifically, I said, okay, Christmas vacation has come up, so we should have more crossing guards by the time kids get back from Christmas vacation.
Okay, do you have information that we didn't have more crossing guards?
No, I didn't even know it existed until you mentioned it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't remember nothing about a Wayne County.
I, I mentioned about having a police presence.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I don't recall.
Well, you said the Wayne County sheriffs or something, they have a program.
Well, I, I talked about Wayne County sheriffs possibly bringing them in because of the behavior in the school zones. I would never ask for them.
Look, I'll look up the meeting, okay. And another thing is, you know, we we've got a lot of officers, say what you will about them. I mean, in my opinion, you know, an officer, any officer that we have is good, I mean. But we've had a lot of officers leaving, and there's no acknowledgement anywhere on them. I mean, if they're retiring, you know, thanks, thanks for your service. I mean, there's several in the, in recent, recently, and they're never mentioned.
Yeah, first of all, I'd be really careful about where you get information. I'm finding that there's always an agenda when we're talking about police staffing. I know that council members have corrected community members about saying that people have quit when people have actually retired. So that's very disheartening. It's almost like police officers aren't allowed to retire if they're at the end of their drop program, they, that someone labels them as quitting. Each individual that has given me notice, and some people give me twelve hours' notice, some people give me a couple of weeks, which is appreciated. But I ask them, do you want to send off? No?
Well, I'm not saying, you know, I'll be, I'll be, Matt Sworple, I mean.
I'm not going to mention any names.
I mean, he retired, he retired, and he's taking some vacation time now or something like that. He turned in his paperwork. And unless it's a secret, I mean, you know, this is, I don't, I don't understand why, I don't care if the guy's a bad guy. Say, you know what, thanks for your service, have a good life.
Mr. Wenzel, is there any information that I have said that that individual that you named is a bad person?
No.
Okay, but you're, but you're, you're talking to me like I have said this is a bad person.
No, no, I said, it doesn't matter what kind of officer they were. If they're a great officer or a bad officer.
I just, I just talked to you about if somebody does want it, then I would certainly give them a send-off.
Too many people want it.
Okay, so we're way off subject.
Well, we're talking about.
Budget item.
But we, we got to stick to the budget. We're talking about employment.
That was a closed session this week.
And, you know, there's, in this, this contract with the command officers, they, they, these, a lot of these officers are retiring, and they're getting this massive amount of comp time, lump sum payments. And that goes into their highest year of salary. And some of these people are going to be getting a pension because of that, you know, a hundred thousand plus retirement pension. And I'd like to see an actuarial, 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 actuariality, or was it?
Actuarial.
Actually, yeah, report. On, on this, this Command Officer Association, that's, that's got layers and layers of effect all the way down to, you know, years from now, the pension and retirement. And we've never got an actuary on, on that. I'd like to see that, too, and see what projected, what that's going to cost the city. Not only the raises, but these buyouts or these comp hours. I mean, there's, there's officers that are single, don't even have a, no family, and all they do is get comp hours. And they're piling them up. I don't know my name anymore, but I know, I've talked to one of them, says I got a zillion comp hours.
So I'm not sure if there's one available, I presume not, and if there's one to be done, we'd have to present it, obviously, to the city council, because it's got to be approved. It's, it's, it's not something that's like a hundred dollars or fifty dollars, it's relatively expensive. So it's something that is a council body, we'd have to agree on.
No, not these comp hour payments.
No, 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 you said the actuarial report.
Oh, actuary, yeah.
It's, it's generally, it's.
That's why I said, I don't know, if there's one available, great, but if not, we'd have to obviously vote on it.
Is it the last three good years? It's not the last two, correct? For the pension?
I believe it's the last three, yes.
Final average compensation. If I just may address this, is that we did reduce that liability to the city significantly in this last contract. We're trying to readjust and reinvest into our employees in proper areas. Time off doesn't pay bills. This is not a new problem. This is something that has been gone, going on over and over and over again. Employees being allowed to buy sick time, employees calling in sick and shorting their shift to go to someone's fortieth birthday party. This isn't a Chief Hart problem, this is a systemic problem, right? And we want to, we want to, we want to address those issues, Mr. Wenzel, in these contracts. It's, it's, but at the end of the day, those were hours that were earned, and we should honor that. We're just, we're trying to shave this down. There has been a, you know, a, a dynamic here in play where, you know, banks and caps were not, no one was watching them. And that's, and that's problematic, but our employees did work them, and and they earned those, right? So it's really kind of a, it's a challenge. And I think we've done pretty well on our dispatchers and our command officers starting to correct some of that. And and, you know, you bring up a valid point. You know, that's just something that that we have been working on.
You know, the, you know, I'm all for giving them comp hours, I mean, a hundred percent. But in the past, we used to give them, they'd have to go by a percentage, fifty percent the first year, twenty-five percent the second year, and twenty-five percent the third year. So they would, they couldn't accumulate that, bam, lump sum, retire with this massive pension. And, you know, there's.
Three years.
Yeah, what's three years?
Okay, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that due to the payouts being so large that there's an agreement that they're paid out over a three-year period. So I don't know if that was your, what you were referring to.
That wasn't the word terminology in the contract. They, they, are, are you issuing comp, compensation payments right now in this week's payment? How many were they totaling, you know, roughly?
How much did we pay out?
Yeah.
Three hundred and something, was it?
Yes.
Three hundred, it's less than four hundred thousand dollars.
That's right.
And we did cap, we put a cap of three hundred and twenty. We had folks with, I want to say fourteen hundred banked hours. People were exchanging comp hours to buy their duty pistols. It's just been, it's been a very, it's an odd situation that we're trying to get a hold of. We want to make sure that we're putting good contracts in front of you, and we, we take that fiduciary responsibility very seriously.
Okay, so just.
We paid out four thousand, one hundred and twenty-one hours of comp time, which came to, oh, that's just their hours. Hold on. Hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Four hundred hours?
Yes.
But that's comp time, not overtime.
That's comp time, but it is considered overtime.
Otherwise.
It's, it's earned at, it's earned at time and a half generally. But what I would like to, what I'd like to kind of highlight here is that we paid those hours off at today's dollars. So let's say an employee had another ten years on the job, and they were cashing in that comp at that point, presumably, their pay would be higher. So it was a, it was a very responsible move on our behalf to, to buy that comp out at this point. Make them whole for the hours they've worked, but also look towards our, our future revenues and expenditures and tax dollars.
How many individuals were paid out in this pay period?
Well, there were twelve that got comp. There were twenty-two individual, there were, there are twelve employees who had got their comps payout, payouts.
So those are, those, those are employees that have left?
No.
You don't have to leave to get your comp payout?
No. This is what we did to adjust the, the contract and tell them going forward that we would cap their comp at three hundred and twenty hours.
So they can pick whatever amount they want? They can, if they have a thousand hours, they can say, give me ten hours?
Yes. But over and above the three hundred and twenty is what we paid out.
Okay.
All right, excuse me, Tom, I'd like to get back to the crossing guards if I could. We're, we're taking a deduction of about ten thousand, and what I saw this past week, we need to keep it the same or higher. I was at Annapolis and Pardee on Monday morning, there were no crossing guards at all. We've already had that sad experience. Tuesday, I was at Bedford when they were getting out, no crossing guards, total confusion with the traffic pattern. We need to get some more, I don't know how we're going to advertise, but we need crossing guards.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but I can't force people to apply, and I can't force them to work. And right now, we're dealing, everyone's mad at each other, right? I, I don't know if it's COVID, I don't know what, what exactly happened, if it's social media. But when you have crossing guards quitting because of the behavior of the motorists, that's problematic, everybody, right? I mean, I've seen the, the behavior firsthand with Council Member Ahmad. I mean, we see how people are behaving. I've had to jump in front of a, it was an expedition that day, and stop him, like, what are you doing? Right? Soon as he dropped his kid off, his obligation to drive safely in his mind ended, right? And was speeding off. And it's, we, we, at some point, people just have to be responsible for their own actions. And we need, we need to, to learn again on how to be kind to each other. I don't know if there's a better way to say it. It's just people are incredibly busy, stressed, mean, whatever words we want to use. But how are we going to pay for part-time people to come in and be treated like that?
I personally would like to volunteer for one to two times per week.
And we will be, we'd be happy to take you. We, we even looked into, because this, again, it's, it, it matters to us because we're in Dearborn Heights, but this isn't just an us problem. There are companies out there that we actually looked to contract with, who would guarantee people would be at the post. It was very, very expensive.
About the cadets?
Yeah. Kind of blurring the lines a little bit there, but, you know, we're, we're trying to find, trying to find solutions to many problems, and and we will do our very best.
Or there's another one, you know, for, for a different honors society, like at different high schools for community service. And they want to build their resume for their colleges.
Yeah.
Insurance at risk.
Those are, you know, high school seniors, but, okay.
I used to be, I used to be a triple A crossing guard, right? You know, a block away from.
Wait, wait, so if you take, I used to be a crossing guard, and I think I was like fourteen at the time.
Do you still have your orange belt?
Huh?
Do you still have your orange belt?
Yeah, yeah, orange belt.
You weren't a crossing guard.
Yeah.
That's what it was, okay.
Council Chair?
Because, no, because now I think it was at McDonald's school, I mean, this is elementary. And I remember I was a crossing guard.
You, you weren't a crossing guard, you were a safety.
Yeah, we had.
Safety, you're right, you're right, right, that's a different safety. Good point, good point. Well, I was, took my pride away.
Yeah. I think that was triple A sponsored that program.
Let's, let's go with nothing else, I assume nothing else on the police department. We're going to go next, we're still with the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm surprised you didn't say this. Uh, Mr. Vanderplow had stopped me in the hall and asked me to add two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the capital outlay because he is in definite, definite lead for Star Chase, portable towers, and a vehicle, uh, actually five vehicles for two hundred thousand.
Wait, okay. Can you run that by me again?
Sure.
So two hundred and seventy thousand?
Yes, for capital outlay. He's asking for five vehicles at two hundred thousand, five, what they call Star Chase at forty-four thousand. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that has something to do with like a.
What is a Star Chase?
It's a ladder that would go on your windshield that would stop you.
Yeah. So, um, much, I think, like you had mentioned earlier about, um, the, the pursuit on Monday. Uh, Star Chase is, uh, a device that we would launch from the patrol vehicle, from the front of the patrol vehicle, to attach to a suspect vehicle that was fleeing the police. And then we would pull back, and then we would follow the vehicle on GPS. So it's a safer way of recovering a vehicle, um, trying to find the individuals who.
But you said it was five of them for four hundred thousand?
Yeah. Uh, no, for forty-four thousand.
Oh, okay.
So stops the high, uh, speed pursuits in Detroit, city of Detroit.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I worked in their, uh, Megaliths Department, they had to stop.
And what was the rest of them?
Five new vehicles for two hundred thousand.
Five Star Chases for forty-four.
And then twenty, uh, he was requesting furniture items for dispatch, front desk, and that was twenty, uh, pieces for twenty-five thousand five hundred.
Okay, but for dispatch, we've already allocated money for the rebuilding of the dispatch. Is this like temporary chairs?
I think that, um, what we've allocated money for, and maybe I'm wrong on this, was basically.
But it was built out and updated.
For the design. I think it was.
Right.
It's the company to come in and design, and then there's going to be a whole budget in that process. What we have right now is a lot of chairs for our dispatchers that are just falling apart, uh, the ripping on the top. We want to get something that's very robust and durable. That is their office for.
No, I'm there, I'm all for it, because I've been to the dispatch, and they're saying that that chair practically all day without moving, yeah. And no, I'm all for that. But I just wanted to get a clarification. So we've got twenty-five, forty-four, and two hundred, is that correct? Is there, is there something missing?
No.
Okay.
How many chairs are we talking about?
Twenty.
Twenty chairs?
Well, he, he put in here furniture items for dispatch front desk, twenty.
But the dispatch in the front desk, when you first walk in, the two officers, if you walk in, uh.
So they, so they go about over a thousand a chair?
They're pretty expensive. I don't think it's just chairs. I think there's some, also, there's some monitors that we want to put up at the, at the front desk, so our officers, um, working the front desk can also look up and see prisoners and other things, excuse me, around the building.
And chief, for the vehicles, are there's just, uh, police, like marked vehicles?
Yes, they will be for our, um, patrol operations, uh, for them to go out and patrol with, you know.
But how are we, it, it's concerning me, how are we like, like suddenly short five vehicles? It seems to be quite a bit to be.
So I don't want to say short.
Okay.
We're going to replace. So we're going to pull five out, and we're going to put five new ones in.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the five out, are they still usable for hypothetically ordinance, building department, et cetera?
They could be. We have offered some of those vehicles up to other departments in the past. We just need to make sure that if those vehicles have been purchased with forfeiture money, uh, so we go through, and I asked our administrative assistant to put stickers on the titles that say if this vehicle's ever sold, that that money has to go back into those forfeiture accounts, so we don't run afoul of the federal government.
Okay.
Yeah.
Council chair?
You, you have to keep in mind, I'm sorry, you have to keep in mind that, you know, these cars are running a lot, right? And what they're accelerating and decelerating very quickly, they're running, um, you know, several hours at a time. So just, it, it's, there's a lot of wear and tear on them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman, go ahead.
A couple of things, um, Tom, Tom Troy, you said you were approached in the hallway by a gentleman, director, police director.
Vanderbilt.
Vanderbilt. Were, um, was his request negotiated and said, you want this, we'll give you this? Or does he took it and put it in here?
Well, our capital outlays, it was my understanding, were all pulled out of the budget. And these are items that we discussed and asked to be put back in. We've asked, we asked for much more. I think there were nine items that we had asked for, uh, in the capital outlay. We asked for additional flock cameras, uh, the CLIA accreditation, uh, program. Uh, we're going to be, um, putting in for about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant for CLIA. We just wanted to get a head start on that. It's the Commission for the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, uh, something that we feel will really accelerate, um, our work at the police department. We, that's been pulled out. Um, the Star Chase, we asked to stay in, the portable towers were out. So if you have something there for a hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, those are portable towers that have a blue light. If you come by the Home Depot next to the police department, you'll see the towers up there with the flashing blue lights. Uh, so we were going to deploy those in some of our, uh, higher crime areas, uh, as a deterrent, and then to try to, um, develop some more leads for our investigators. Uh, the vehicles stayed in, uh, the furniture items for dispatch shouldn't stay in, but, um, we were requesting that. Um, upgrade and certify the range operations for two hundred thousand, and retrofit our jail areas for two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, back to this, uh, Star Wars thing where it shoots a star at car and.
Star Chase.
Star Chase. I mean, is it magnetic? Or, I mean, is it like a bullet?
No, it's, it's, I mean, I guess it's a projectile, um, so it wouldn't necessarily be a bullet, but it is a projectile that's fired from one vehicle, uh, from the police vehicle to suspect vehicle, and then it sticks onto the vehicle itself. I don't know what the proprietary material is, but it sticks. Um, it's something, yeah, something that police departments are, um, deploying. Uh, I was listening to a report on WJR, I believe NYPD just, um, requested, uh, several of them in their budget as well. Uh, we're all dealing with people that just will not stop for the police.
I understand that. I know what happens, for sure.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, are they safe to the public? Are there studies I take it done where it, it shoot, the car, you shoot it, the car turns and it shoo, keeps going and hits someone on sidewalk?
Yeah, it's not, uh, um, the velocity of it and the energy behind it is not something like, uh, a twenty-two bullet or whatever that's going to carry on for.
What about reloading it once it's used?
I do not know. I do not know the answer to that. I assume that it is, but I also don't want to give bad information either, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So next up, we're going to go ahead, um, and go to page forty-four to two sixty-five And the next two, two sixty-five and two sixty-six fund, these are pretty self-explanatory, but we'll have, uh, briefing on that. Page forty-four first. Chief, go ahead. I, I mean, actually, you could just answer the questions in case there is any.
I guess it's just.
Right. Any questions on that? Where does the revenue go?
If it's forfeiture money, we have, uh, two line items. We either have a federal or a state line item. So the items that are put in front of you at council for, let's say, from Wayne County for various grants, those would go into the state, uh, forfeiture fund. Uh, we do have, still have one individual who's assigned out to the Drug Enforcement Administration's Task Force. So, um, we're expecting a significant amount of bad guys' money, uh, to influx here in the next six to twelve months. So this fund will grow, and there are limitations on what we can and cannot spend that money on. And that money will not zero out and go into the fund balance at the end of the year. This is very protected, um, and restricted, uh, funds.
For what they use for in general?
Uh, we can use it to, uh, buy vehicles, all kinds of things. I certainly don't want to sit on a bunch of money if there's ways for us to contribute. Um, you know, not like the fire department, there are opportunities for us to, uh, use bad guys' and girls' money, uh, to buy things. So we want to be good stewards of the public funds. So if there's an opportunity and it swells, we're using it for the body cameras, uh, which I have on. So there's, there's many things that we can use it for. Oh, I'm hoping to, to use it for, uh, some officer wellness programs and such.
So, so the forfeited money or vehicles or whatever, so they go into a, a state or a federal account, and, and we get money back from that? Is that how that works?
We have, we have the accounts, and they're separated, uh, by state or federal forfeiture. So there are accounts, and they get deposited into our, um, forfeiture accounts, but we also get audited on those and have to follow certain rules about what we spend that money on. We can't, uh, for instance, just say we want to give everybody a raise and pull that money out of there.
Do we get it all back, or is there a fee?
No, that's our money. That's, that's money that's designated, it's, it's through a DAG program. So, uh, if we were all on a task force, if there were ten of us on a task force, uh, they would divvy up, uh, what percentage of work that was done on a particular case. And at the end of the day, when there is forfeitures, then we would get that percentage back.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on page forty-four, two sixty-five fund? The next one's the two sixty-six fund, which is on page forty-six. And this is, um, appropriations from confiscated monies federal funds.
This is what you wanted to spend on. It shows the six hundred and fifty thousand that we put on your.
Any questions on page forty-six?
Yeah.
All right. Anything on your end, chief?
No.
Okay. Thank you, chief, but you can stay there just in case, uh, if you don't mind. Um, I'm going to go ahead and go to anybody on Zoom or anybody in the audience, public comments, just in case.
I don't know if there's anybody on Zoom.
Okay.
Do you want to do Zoom first?
Uh, Mr. Jamal, go ahead. And please let us know if you're speaking as a director or as a resident.
Good afternoon. I am speaking as the director.
Yes.
Just want to make a comment regarding, you know, something maybe you should know, because I know. Uh, when you look at the fund, the one oh one, we look at the account, the one oh one means the name of the fund. The, the second one is the department. Then after that is the account in that department, and the last one is the year you are in. So if you look at the two sixty-five or two sixty-six or one oh three, they are not the general fund. So one oh one is the general fund. That means those are the taxation that you are collecting and the revenue you're collecting as a general operation of the city of Dearborn Heights. Those are controlled, non, uh, uh, non-restricted operational that you are allowed, okay, under the law, to deal with them without restrictions. Any fund outside the one oh one, which is, some of them are obligated by state regulations, by federal regulation, by the fund itself, those are categorized, okay, under the state law, the treasury department to be different and to have their own revenue account and their own expenditure account. They are not included in the mix with the general fund, which is one oh one.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you, Director Jamal.
One, one, one more thing is that when you hand a grant that you're applying for, you don't budget for in the one oh one account. Why? If you budgeted for and you spend it, and you don't collect, you have a problem and you create deficits in your one oh one budget. So what you do is you do what we call dummy account, okay? You use that particular, uh, 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 you know, allocation when it's materialized, that when you sign the agreement as a reimbursement, and you get your money back to the general fund, a pool account. So you don't put it from the budget, but you put it from the fund balance. You pay for it as a loan, then you carry it back.
Okay.
So you won't see it budgeted.
Then I would suggest.
You just want to make sure that you know about that, so.
No, thank you.
It's something.
So I, I would suggest that the controller reach out to Mr. Jamal, because I know on, um, based on, uh, Director Jamal's, uh, comments there, uh, the two items under the fire department, those are under one oh one, so you may have to maybe get together with Mr. Jamal and the controller, maybe make adjustments as, you know, provided what he's saying is, is workable.
We've had issues before when I was the director for the budget and grant compliance. We've had issues of that, that fund being spent from general fund one oh one on anticipated, uh, grant that never materialized and, or, or delayed, and later on, and that create, that creates a problem for the cash, for a problem for the ability of the city to spend money on what, what really should spend money on under general fund one oh one.
Okay.
In the grand days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will get a hold of, okay, so the controller will get a hold of you and make whatever possibly necessary adjustments. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Jamal. Next up, name city street, please.
Rachel LePointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, so a couple of comments. I would love to see our emergency manager, Bob, be like kind of the face of communicating with the community when an emergency happens. He is so, and this is, I know he's here, so I, I want him to hear this. He is so calming and just, he has a really good demeanor, and I think that he would be really good, like, for videos and stuff on Facebook and stuff like that, to be the main communicator. I just, I don't know, I find him to be very calming, and I think that that would be really great, just as an idea for him. Um, and I was really glad to hear him say that we're bringing back, like, the cert training and stuff. I think that that's really needed, especially for the south end. Like, I would love to see teams in the neighborhoods getting set up so that when we flood, we're ready to go, like, with a phone tree to check on, you know, the seniors in the neighborhood, and we know who's in charge of that in the neighborhood. I think he's got a, I can tell he's got a lot of great ideas for that. Um, and then I was just kind of thinking about what the chief said about us needing to be kind to each other. And like, if it's COVID or something like that, and I think it is. I think we've all been traumatized by the pandemic and just what's been going on. And I know there's been a lot of things in the budget for trainings and stuff, and I know our HR director talked about doing some, like, customer service trainings. Um, I would just suggest that when we're finding those different trainings for all the departments this year, that we look for things that are trauma-informed. Because if we're not keeping that in mind, that we're traumatized as residents, but you guys who are working here, you all went through the same thing, we're all kind of in this place where it's really hard to get anything done. And when we're trained to keep that in mind, I think it'll really go a long way towards rebuilding the trust between the community and the city, and the different departments, and rebuilding kind of that hopeful attitude that we need. Um, so that was just kind of my suggestion. And then I did have a question about the forfeiture funds. If, um, I love the idea of using it for mental wellness and stuff for the officers, but could it also be used for something like a community event, like the National Night Out? Um, something like that? I don't know if that's something that would be allowed under that. I don't know if you know that answer off the top of your head.
I, I feel that if it's, has to do with crime prevention, it's something certainly I, I feel that if it's, has to do with crime prevention, it's something certainly that we can do. Kind of a little, I don't want to get too far ahead of what's coming, but I did some, get some excellent news from the DOJ cops office that they're going to be coming here, we're going to be doing some community forums, they're going to be investing a lot of money and time over the next 18 to 24 months into the police department, some training. And at the event we were at last night, even talked about opening that up to some of our surrounding communities, because many of us drive through Dearborn and other communities. And maybe we share this leadership and wellness message with everyone. But I think starting some community forums and getting people engaged in crime and what is the, the plan of the police department on how to address crime and getting into that and sharing that information would be beneficial to everyone.
I really agree with that, for sure.
So we, we certainly want to get much better on the community relations piece and building those relationships and being more transparent. We're very close to launching a transparency dashboard, I think, that will, the community will really get engaged in. So we, we have a lot of things going on, like a lot of departments, we're kind of at capacity. But we're going to, we're, you know, we have several people that want to join the police department and we really can't begrudge anyone for, you know, moving on to other opportunities. But we want to build a great relationship with the community and that's kind of our goal.
Yeah, and maybe that's something that those, those forfeiture funds, if we have extra, I know it's hard to find places in the budget for things like that, so maybe that's a place we can look.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Anybody else in the audience that has questions or comments? Okay, anybody else on Zoom? I don't see nobody else. Do you? You guys don't, let me just make sure here, who's Vince?
Where is he?
Okay, nobody's got their hand up while I guess that basically ends it?
I just have one last thing, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I just want to clarify a couple of things and I'd like you to just go to page 33. And this is your general fund budget. There was something that was mentioned on Tuesday that we had taken 2.8 million dollars out of the general fund balance to balance the budget. And I just wanted to clarify that that was last year, that was not this year. And this year, if you look at 23, 24 recommended budget, I have left 932,000 in there. And that's where we can use as a placeholder where we would like to move the, some of the funds over to capital outlay.
Okay.
Okay.
Controller, thank you very much. You've done a lot of work on this, so I thank you and your whole department for all you do. Thank you, everyone, good night.